Okay, I guess everybody got their packets on Friday. Uh, three in there, just to read them.
Make the motion for approval.
Tom Frazier made the motion for approval.
I was second.
Tommy Bailey's second. Is there any discussion, any leases, additions, anything you need changed on the minutes?
I have one, we need something to take forward which is behind the way it's written, but uh, Mary Ann made the motion for the renaissance about the bill and I seconded motion. Tom did both yay, but I was the one seconded motion, not Tom Frazier, I mean. If you want to, that's behind the way it's written.
I don't have a problem with Tom going to sign with Bailey.
Any other, any other, okay. Any other questions or relations to, will, will, you can pass them, will that change?
And he said that who made the motion?
Mary Ann made the motion, I seconded.
Jeff seconded it. And then Tom Frazier seconded.
If you're gonna change that, then me and Tom both voted no.
I voted no for sure.
Yeah.
It's not something that I'm saying. I mean, I wouldn't go for that.
He said that who made the...
Well, you did that. Huh? I just, I think you didn't say so.
Well, I wasn't voting, I just think, you didn't change everything else.
Yeah, well, if you don't see nothing like that, next thing you know, it's been...
Yeah, and Jeff Bailey said he seconded, but I thought Tom seconded it too. We all, we all three had them, Tom seconded it.
Well, I voted no. I'm not in favor of giving the city tax first money away.
I seconded it.
I ain't got no idea, I didn't know I voted no.
Did you vote no?
Yeah.
No, no.
Yeah, Tom seconded.
Yeah, Tommy Bailey.
I seconded it, cause we got some questions. What changes on that?
That's why. Any other, any other thing you see on the minutes that needs to be changed or whatever? Okay, with those?
I'm second.
Uh, additions, additions, or corrections, I should say, corrections. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed, same sign. Uh, next is bills for approval.
I'll make the motion that we pay the bills.
Uh, Kenneth Wiggins made the motion to pay the bills, do I hear a second?
I'm favoring.
Tom Frazier second. Now, any questions on the bills?
Yeah, I got one question.
All righty.
Kimmy, is that actually Kena that we, and is that workman's comp?
Yeah.
Is that actually, do we buy that through Kimmy?
That's the insurance carrier, Kentucky Insurance.
Is that Slade Colton?
That's three ninety.
Kimmy is the carrier, just like Travelers is...
What are you gonna do in that?
On the side.
I'm gonna buy that through Kimmy. Hey, I don't know.
It is bought through Slade Colton.
Yeah, but it's Kimmy.
But you're paying Slade, you've actually paid them for it.
We actually paid them, just like we actually paid Travelers.
Okay.
When are, uh...
Is this a quarter?
None.
Down here on your Napa bill here, when are we expecting these new cars to come in?
Uh, the Napa bill this year, once again, we had a thousand fourteen dollar bill for six cars for the pump and everything, it was the highest time. We all get the cars in when we get the audits, when the bank gives them and approves our leasing, which is... They're waiting on our audits, they have to have an audit before they approve our leasing. And they should be, they've been putting me off for two weeks on the audits and they said that...
And that was for what, for the pumpers?
For the new pumpers, for the little pumpers, new pumpers.
Cars?
Six, six cars, mm-hmm.
I didn't know that was so far, that was so far.
That's over anything, that's over anything you want.
Anything?
Yeah. I wasn't stuck on that.
But that's, that's reading the bills, that's just the car. That's the big bill.
Gardner's landscape, is that, that's the whole...
Yeah, how many more is that?
One more, and then to redo all the landscape and get the pump and everything in the...
What does the... Not, not to dispute anybody's. What's the matter with the street department, can't take them all that up through there?
They had a contract with them before I took over, we just always done it.
Well, wouldn't that say, I mean, we got the board working for the city, couldn't they move that?
With this con, next budget, we're gonna look at that, that's one of the things gonna be...
Even if they had to buy another more?
We were gonna look at that, I already talked to Jeff about that.
Sitting down there in the days or not, at work, they could get them all in the ground.
I understand that, I understand that. And that's actually the next budget that was gonna be looked at, and you all be able to see, get your information or give your opinion on it.
Yeah, I would be, I know it's impossible.
Cause I talked about, me and Jeff talked about it a little bit ourselves too, so...
Well, I mean, that's just...
I believe we can eagle sometimes.
I believe you can come out ahead and say a little, I...
I'll have the exact figure what they paid the charges a year, and I'll have the exact figure what it cost us due a year if you want to put it...
I mean, you know, uh, it's worth looking at.
I know, it is, I agree.
It's about the job too, man, can't a part of man, I believe you keep a man full time, I won't grass up.
Too good.
Too good.
I look in, uh...
I'm, I'm gonna, I'd say, I'll get you, in fact, the contract runs from June 3rd to June 30th, just like everybody else, and so, that's when our next budget, you talk to...
Had a big crowd in the park this past weekend.
Opening, Little League, yeah.
Little League opening.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But you're not gonna save no money with that crowd, I can tell you that.
Well, we didn't have to...
Down there, you couldn't, you couldn't even walk through it.
The only difference between this year and last year is the high school and girls softball's not there, so we haven't spent one penny on the ball fields. The Little League does their own, to their ball fields. And the, the high school, uh, Carpentry Department made us a new drag, so we'll be able to drag their softball field. And, uh, so really, we're, we're saving quite a bit of money with the, with the, about six thousand dollars from high school, you know, to have it, let them have it, games there too anyway, so they lost money too.
I think that field's in pretty good shape now.
Field's in pretty good shape.
I don't need them all, I'm...
Field looks real, uh, shaped, they just, uh, they said that big, one big field down there, they don't know how much they're gonna use it, they, when the senior league starts, they might use that sound, but basically, it's the softball, softball field, and the Little League field, and the T-ball field out there. Which I'd like to work a little bit on the T-ball, we moved the bleachers out there, so they have a place to sit. I'm sure everybody would want a carted wagon and chairs out there, since the senior leagues not, or the baseball, not using the baseball field, we went and moved the bleachers out there for them to sit out there, and, uh, so... And we got a new door open on the shed over there, so we can park, start parking our lawn, we're back over there, keeping our stuff, and I've got that done.
What about the food, the food that's there yet?
Whoever sits, Little League is doing the food. We just have trouble people using the bathrooms, stopping the commodes up, and smearing feces on the walls, and everything, it's like we always do.
Well, I mean, the other day, they said we needed to be sprayed.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be lovely, yeah, it's hard.
Uh, sure, the street, the street park, the boys still more in the park, more in the park, or somebody else more?
Yeah, we, we more the park. We, we, we can do everything, any of the, the city does on the park. They don't, they don't have nobody employed for that. We do all that. Any more questions on the bills?
Jeff has something, what's on the line?
All in favor, yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Was that you and Davis?
Yes, you and Davis.
Did they vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They said aye.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Tom Frazier second.
Okay, on this GPS, is what this is, is, uh, Big Sandy Addwood has a GPS system where we can, you can GPS back the streets, the water lines, the sewer lines, and it's twelve hundred dollars. And the waterworks wanted to know if we would go in half, and then pay six, so they could do their lines and their sewers, GPS it, and we can do the streets. Dave Gardner said he had volunteered to help us do the streets, go look at all the streets and try to get the width, the length, where they start, where they end, and GPS it, so we'll have an accurate map of the whole city. And it would cost us six hundred dollars to have purchased that.
Who, who keeps it down there?
David Gardner will keep it.
We can just use it if we need it?
We could use it, or he'd use it for us, he said he don't care a bit to come down and build the, you know, build the GPS for us.
You're saying it costs twelve hundred dollars?
Costs twelve hundred dollars altogether, they're, they're gonna pay six hundred, and we'll pay six hundred.
I make the motion, we do that.
I second that.
Got a motion by Jeff and a second by, uh...
Poor boy.
Any questions on it?
Shouldn't that be put, put before the water board, that was?
They probably voted no, to vote it...
Let them pay for it.
Well, it's kind of a joint effort, true. Well, they might be...
You all said it's two different, two different...
I know, but they, they've done a good job up there, and they're saving money, and they're, they're about to get out of the skin of the teeth.
Is it true that they raise the water rates again?
Uh, they will be raising the water rates.
Oh, it's true, then?
Yeah, it is true, yeah. They don't try to hide it.
Again.
The county raises, they're fifteen percent, nobody told you then, I don't think, did you?
Well, we're not on the county, are we?
We're not on the county, they did tell you.
But, we know it now, don't we?
Yeah, the problem is with, uh, and I, I'll, I'll say a little something about the water right now. They done a study, they finally got the study in, and what we do is, we, it costs us two dollars and sixty-five cents per thousand to purify the water, to drain. We sell it to, no, it costs us three dollars and four cents. We sell it to the county for two dollars and sixty-five cents, through a contract that they signed fifteen years ago. So, there you go, we lose money on the water, but, you know, but, but even if that's said, with the rates they, the way they are in the city, we make money on the water, but we still lose on the sewer.
Has the city ever paid the county off on that debt they owe?
No, we haven't.
What's holding that up here?
Till the waterworks pays us, and then we'll pay them.
Oh. That's, uh, what?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
No winners, just a straight out loan from the Gulf County water.
As far as I've heard, none's been paid.
Yeah, it hasn't been paid. Hard to come up with fifty thousand dollars when you just drove them, kept them on.
Well, it's, I'm finding all that, water rates been going up every year for the last three years?
If you go back three years and see how much the water company was losing, and now you're saying it's breaking even, then you'd see where all that money's going, that's what, what they've done to try to do it.
And it's getting ready...
And keep up.
And it's getting ready to go again, you said, so, another increase.
No, no, no. What we agreed to do when I took over, and we did, we said we was gonna pass the water rates on to the city at ten percent a year for three years.
Right.
They only raised it two years in a row, they didn't raise it last year, so we've got one year, and now they're just gonna raise it five percent instead of ten percent. So, they're trying to keep it down and doing the best they can, but that's, and then after this year, they're gonna start doing the cost of living, like, one and a half or two percent's what we're talking about, to keep up the cost of living, so...
I'm keeping, where are you concerned?
Just raise it every year a little bit, and then raise it. But if you've seen what it is that before, when I took over, when the AEP comes in here and says, well, they, it was a eighty thousand dollar electric bill, and I'm flattered we're gonna turn the electric off.
Well, I honestly believe this, I'll say this too, from what I've been going through the meetings, if you, we didn't have most of the people running the Sargeville Waterway today, and I believe we would've had other companies running the Sargeville Waterworks, I believe our water bill would've been a heck of times as large as it, as it is today.
Oh, yeah. We still pay a lot of the small, one of the smallest water bills in the state, so it's...
Probably been better water too, Jeff, you'd think that.
You don't drink any of it, Tommy, you should worry about it.
No, I mean, it, it could be coming from the Paintsville Lake too, someday.
Uh, it'd be very difficult for them.
Or another reservoir somewhere, so, the river.
The problem is, if taken from the Paintsville Lake, and they'll tell you that, for the Paintsville Lake, for them to get their water to us, they have to bring it through our, our...
Well, I'm saying, well, I'm not for it, but if it ever fell in somebody else's hands, like the state or the government, it would go with another resource, they would get out of that river.
Well, they didn't do it when they was getting ready to take it over first, they didn't say nothing about the river.
They didn't have that big new water paint get over there, neither did...
Well, like I'm saying, I don't think we, you can't use the Paintsville water source because it has to come to our, distribute it to us, so...
You gotta get that water to a distribution center.
There's no line to do that.
And no way getting that water to the, there's only one distribution center in this community, and that's the Sargeville one.
You'd have to build a ten billion, or ten million dollar distribution center on the county line, shoot, everybody else, and they're not gonna, we're not gonna, no way gonna give that.
If we could buy their water as, as cheap as we can produce it, I'd say that'd be a good thing, but if we can't...
I think, I think the thing you need to do is you need to come on the third Tuesday of every month, the Waterboard meeting. And they, I'll tell you what, their Waterboard meeting's good, they'll tell you everything, they get a financial report every, they, it's down to the penny, and they're doing a good job, and, you know, and then all they're trying to do is improve.
Well, what do you want, assistance from the city to pay for that?
Because it's a part of, it's a part of us, we're, we appoint the commissioners, it's a part of us. They're gonna do their stuff, I want to pay them six hundred so we can use it on the streets and get our stuff done right. You don't have any people coming here, well, somebody's on their right away, this street goes so far, this street don't go so far, we're on their property, we're on that. If we GPS everything, and we got accurate, down to the inch lines with them GPS, then there's no question, they can come in here, look at the map, say, here it is.
The way I look at it too...
We've been trying to find that street on College Heights forever, how far it goes up that hill. We can't, it's supposed to be in the minutes, we can't find that yet, we've been, we're looking, but we just need to know where it goes to.
We're all the same people, that's what we need to do in this community. Our city, our county government needs to work together. Our city and our Sargeville Waterworks are not separate people. If we needed a backhoe, I believe they'd, they'd come to us and use their backhoe. And I know they clean toilets and...
And they give us the backhoe we got, so...
So, I mean, and as GPS is used...
If we do that, they, they need to abolish the Waterboard, you don't need them there.
You can't do that.
But the city, city and Waterwork...
You can't do that long as you owe money.
Jeff, if you're talking at all, it should be one.
You can't, you can't do that, you can't do it long as you don't owe money, and we got, they got a thirty dollar, or thirty, twenty-five year, uh, bill, but...
And sometimes if you've got...
Longest, it'd be a good idea, it's fair, but if it's making, if it had been making money all these years, and they had the surplus they had twenty years ago, and that squandered all the money, if our hell had been correct, but they did. And now we are feeling the effect of it, and we gotta do, do the best we can, you know? Anywhere else, somebody probably went to jail for that stuff, but not here, they got away with it, you know, and that's fine, I ain't got no problem with that, they gonna get away with it, but we gotta move forward, and we can't dwell in the past, and we gotta make the best we can, and as long as I'm there, I'm gonna make the best we can, cause we, we got the best water in East Kentucky, probably the state, according to the state, that comes in and monitors our water now.
It was like an abandoned house for twenty years.
And we've got a system now that produces the water, that produces clean water, and the GPS is just something we're letting go out and find these lines, and like, somebody comes and says, where's the water line, instead of finding it with the backhoe.
Huh?
Leaving it up and busting it, that's the problem, you just found it, so, I think six hundred dollars, I'll give it to us, to ask, and for the city to use it, I mean, rest it, it'll be worth it though.
You give six hundred dollars to know where the water line can get done by?
Yeah, oh, yeah, true. Well, they break water lines all day, these backhoes are digging, and, and somebody shoveling, or...
Probably a gas line out there, a new church, yeah.
But it's just to get accuracy, just to have everything GPS, so we know where everything is, and they'll, they'll, they're gonna do the gas lines too, you know, in the city too, but, so, just, just something that's...
I'm still having a lot of complaints about trailers. Does anybody have, Jeff, has anybody complained to you about trailers?
Oh, what trailer?
Trailers, people in the trailers. The people that live in the trailers here in Sagerfield. Huh?
Oh, I guess so, sometimes.
Well, thank you, thank you, and if you play, you find me a maybe, she had to, if you're on the council, you had to get it, cause I know I get a pair. Uh, something's wrong with, oh boy, no...
I get all kinds of them, Tom.
Well...
Just wanted to know.
Okay, okay, hey, Tom, can we go over this, get this out off the floor, then we'll open it up to discussion, okay, when we get to that, okay? I'm the DPS. Then we can get on that, and then we, we can have a good discussion on that, if you want, okay? Let's get the bills out.
I don't care whether we got it or not, but it's a problem.
Well, we'll bring it up, since you brought it up.
Been a problem a long time, yeah.
We got a motion and a second. We got a motion and a second from Paul, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
I'm gonna do...
I vote no one, I'm not, they, they're on where the damn lines are at, they've been in up there fifty years.
And you can't, you can't, you, you couldn't go along with it.
Charles wrote, did Charles wrote to tell you wherever water line is in town? Garkin do, Garkin do.
Close.
Oh, I can't bring up that water.
They have trouble finding something in the city and out, since they're done, cause they're a part of trying to find one other damn front there.
There's still a lot of cast iron pipes too, that cause out, if you change.
Sure are. Okay, next, generator for the Waterworks. Now, this is another one Tommy's gonna be happy about, I can tell.
They already got a generator there.
They got one generator to purify the water, they don't have a generator to take the water out of the river. And that's the problem. Uh, and, uh, what, and what they're wanting us to do is if we would like to go in with them on that, what I would like to do is set the fart department and the city hall up to use that generator too.
So, we can bar it in, we can bar it in, then we want?
It'll be on it, now, let me just explain, it'll be on a trailer, it'll be mobile. The city hall is the second, uh, building in the city that's designated as an emergency, in case we have another tornado, if the, if the health department's destroyed, then this is where everybody will come. And we're not set up for a, the genera, a generator in, just like the Waterworks wasn't last time.
Corrections.
Wasn't.
Come to work, we don't have no shelters yet, where they are.
It'll be a shelter, once the tornado hits, you don't need a shelter, you need a place for the emergency management to set up shop, that's what it is. So, that's what it's for, back, Tom, you need a place...
He'll say it.
He'll say, there you go.
Talk, there's a tornado, we need a shelter first, what we're talking about.
Now, that, that's in progress.
That's in progress, but yet, yet far away then.
No, it ain't far away, we're just finding around the place, the place to put it. And I, I talked to, well, we'll get to that in a second, on my mayor's report about the shelters, okay? Jumping again, again. But they're, they're not, they're wanting, it's twenty-four thousand dollars, and they're looking at payments on it, but I just thought I'd throw it from the city council, see if you might be interested, and I'll bring them, come back to the next meeting with, you know, you know, a discussion on it, whenever they figure...
How much is it?
Twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
That's with the trailer. And they're wanting to set it up like on a three-year payment plan or something, but I, they didn't have all the specifics of the last Waterboard meeting. But it would be on a trailer, and they'll either house it up there, or we could even put it down here, or, or, whatever, but it would be... They wouldn't have to pump water all the time up there, in the case of the electric went out, but, you know, we'd bring it down here and hook it in, and we go ahead and set our electric boxes up, and they just come...
What's a pumping or a water now?
No, not yet, we're not going.
Once electric's out, they don't pump water to the water, they just, they'll just keep it to one purifying water, that's what this county got the generator for them.
From their words, the generator they got won't work the pump through the river.
No, it's two separate pumps, two separate, I mean, two separate, whatever, electrical pumps, yeah.
So, around the lobby down there, rear, what they...
Well, how did they work it, back after the tornado, and then they used a generator for a while?
They had enough water, and it kept, it pumped some wa, pumped some water out of it.
Had enough water on the storage?
Yeah, they had enough water and storage, and then, uh, they got the electric back on in time before it went out.
They want, their part of that to be bought?
They in the city, I give them a figure, I just wanted to throw it out to you, see, would that be in this budget, or? Be in the next budget.
Next budget?
Yeah, I think four, no more, buy them, other than six hundred dollars for GPS and...
So, you're gonna come back with this one next?
Yeah, I'd like to come back, but I just wanted to throw it out to our team, let y'all talk about it. See if you thought it was a good idea, if, good enough idea for me to go back and maybe try to talk with them, so, you know.
Agreed for a minute, but you know, great idea.
I'd like to know what her rate increase is planned for the next, the Waterworks.
What do you mean, what's year mark four?
Well, what they got, what they got, not, ten percent?
Okay, no, five percent. And, and Dave, when we first started, it was thirty percent, it's gonna be ten percent for the next three years, after public knowledge, we made all kinds of announcements. The first two years, they raised it ten percent, the third year, they didn't raise it, cause they were, they wanted to give the people a break a little bit, now they got, they're gonna put a five percent. So, it's still not as much as they were, we were gonna do, but we're also in the process of negotiating a contract with the county to raise their rates. And they're hoping that'll take over where the city don't have to pay the rates right then, that much other than the cost of living like I talked about.
Well, they went ten, ten, three fifty, didn't they?
Huh?
Ten, ten, and three fifty?
Sure.
That's right.
Now, the sewer's separate from that, the ten, ten, eight.
So, three fifty and a five?
Ten, ten, the five is a water sewer, it's all water sewer, ten, ten, five. The rates that were adding on the sewer were separate, like for the grinder pumps, you know, cause they were costing so much to keep. That's why they went to borrow the money and buy the new ones, so they won't have to be paying so much out on those things. So, I'm gonna save money in the long run, I'll tell you, it is, and it will, and it will cause the water and sewer to be better.
Be better and come from the same place.
That's right, exactly.
Everybody did that.
Wouldn't want any, I wouldn't want any other water, I wouldn't want any other water that came from the Gulf of Canada. I ain't gonna drink Paintsville water, I ain't gonna be pressing work for a candle, I'm gonna drink warm Canada water.
You don't drink bottled water either, you give them bottled water.
I'll just, I'll just from the IGA up here in Parkland, while they pause, I'll drink it.
What is the chemicals, they changed the chemicals up there, and the cost of them chemicals went outrageous after that, doesn't it?
They changed a lot of requirements on our chemicals and all that stuff, and then they put the new chlorine system in, and, and, so... Okay, enough on the generator and the water plants, we'll get them again. Uh, mayor's report, and then we'll talk, we'll have a discussion on the trailers and stuff after that, okay, that be helpful? Okay, I'll put you right in there. Uh, we got a grant, uh, a couple of weeks ago, David May worked on it and got it for ten thousand dollars, and it's gonna pay for a twenty-five hanging pot, so we can put around the city for fires to go in, it's gonna pay for some signings to go up at historical areas in the city, like, uh... Over here where the old courthouse used to be, it'll have a, a thing there, and have a picture of old court, the first courthouse, and have information on it, people can come up and, it's got some kind of thing on it, you can use your phone on it with the app, and, and read about all of that, so, we got that, and, uh, we're gonna start working on that just in the next little bit, getting all that stuff started, hopefully have it before spring gets a little too far on. Uh, they're gonna let out bids on the contract on Restaurant Row, uh, June twenty-ninth, but they're already started turning down some of the buildings, most of the tenants have already been told to be out by a certain date. I think the Dollar Store will be closed on the fifteenth of May, uh, they give me and Hossi into a little extension because their building's not ready yet, they're moving back down to where the strip mall is, where that cafe was, besides the Appalachia Wells. And, but they're getting ready to tear all that stuff down, and hopefully by August, they'll be, uh, be working on the road up there. Uh, the storm shelters, I've talked with the state, up there where the mighty mark got blowed down, they're not gonna, they bought that, the state did, and they're, they're moving our sewer, uh, pump station into that area, but it's plenty big enough for us to set one of the shelters there, as the state left. Uh, the guy, I talked to John Sanders up here at the Transportation Department, and he's put in a couple of phone calls, and, uh, they would have it about direct one, directly on the parkway, and then the other one would put down in town or somewhere, if that, I agree with you all, I mean, that's, I was just looking at stats on the parkway, and if the state would lease it to us, or let us have it as a city, it'd be a perfect location, and we'd have signage right there.
If you're on the parkway, if you're in storm, they're down town.
And the next time, look, that's put right behind Tommy, he's in the store there, so he can get blow away, we want to save him.
That's his backyard.
Plenty of storm, it's not bad, I was hoping he'd donate it, but I ain't, I ain't got to talk to him yet, so... But that's where we're at on the storm shelter, quick as we get, and I have some other places in town, we'll go and measure all of them, and bring it back to you all, and, and I'll ask you where you, where you think might be the best, best, uh, place to put it. On our lease agreement with the cars and stuff, they're still, we're still waiting on our audit, the bank won't give us a lease agreement till the, till the audits, they got their hands on the audit. And, uh, right now, we're just a little over budget, twenty thousand dollars, but I think by the end of the year, we'll be right on it, and we'll be, we'll be right on what we're gonna spend, you know, so... Other than that, everything looking, we're just putting along now.
Before we run over budget?
Well, with the audits is one thing I didn't plan on, the shelters I didn't plan on, uh, I've got a list of them, I didn't bring them, there's about four or five things it costs us, but, and on the other hand, we've got some extra money I didn't think we were gonna get, so, we're still running over budget a little bit, so... But twenty-one, we had almost a hundred and some thousand dollar surplus, if we run over a little bit, I'm not too concerned about it, cause we have used it for stuff that we needed for the city, and made an improvement for the city, so... But other than that, that's all I got, got to mention on that. Now, Tom, we'll open the discussion to the council first, and if you wanna talk about the trailers, we'll see, see what kind of plants you've been having, or whatever.
I, I'm just about sure that they're not inspected when they're moved in there, and I doubt if they have that...
Which we're at, now, we're at.
Anyplace, some, some people are moving trailers in the city, and close to the county here, or close to the city, and I don't think they're being inspected, you know, if you get a mover, uh, licensed mover, he's gonna tie, tie those trailers, they're...
I tried, he put tires on them, tire...
Oh, I understand that.
They put tile, and they tie them down, but I don't think it, it's every bunch is doing them, I think they're just bringing them in overnight.
I, well, I ain't seen none of them, technically, been brought in.
But whoever that lose that trailer has to give you a certification that it's legal.
Yeah, unless a prep moves it.
But ain't no other, somebody to move, you can't get membership if they, somebody else does it with no license.
How can you get that?
You do have to have a permit.
How do you get that certificate without a door?
That's what I'm saying, you have to have that sticker. It's ID stickers, the name of it. I've got a lot of them out there, there's two of them on each trailer.
So, you think all the trailers in the city is all right then?
Well, I don't know about them, but I don't mind.
The problem there is, we grandfathered that in, so anything that was already in the city, we don't have no, we can't, we don't inspect, we only inspect the ones they moved in. Now, the state, and I've got a copy of their, I got it last two weeks ago, cause everybody's complaining, I got, the state, as a health department, we inspect trailers, but we inspect for garbage, uh, different things, but we can't, it's not like doors off or something like that, it's, it's certain things that the state inspects for, and we charge the trailer guys a fee on it.
You have to have a sticker from the, uh, bar department, not a bar department, uh, she's an inspector, Gayle Ward, now, she comes and inspects and gives you a sticker, and you have to give that to the electrical inspector, and there are another one too, you have to get it, or the, the, no, from the trailer mover. Whoever moves your trailer has to give you a sticker too. It's just a real pop, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece, just to the truck.
What's the problem, I get the trash around them, or something like that, or, you know, you know, what for, but, like I say, our health inspector, uh, Patrick Boyd up there, he goes around and inspects the lot, but the problem is, we only inspect them every three months or so. We go and inspect them one month, we tell them to clean everything up, they clean it up, we go back out, look, it's cleaned, and in two more months, they'll have all the garbage piled out, you know, it's, and it, and what we've decided, or what I've decided, and I've talked, is the last time we had a complaint, we wrote the property owner, because it's really the property owner, not the trailer renter.
That's right.
Is, is responsible for that. So, we can find, our ordinance says if they, if it's not just for trailers, but anybody, if it's the garbage or something we built up, we can, we can find them a hundred dollars for them. That's, that's the ordinance, not gonna have to be a trailer, you know? As far as the doors on them and the windows on them, that's the state inspector, we, I have, the state don't have no control, and we don't have ordinance to say anything about that. So, you know, that's, uh, I mean, my biggest problem is the nastiness and the bad looks of them, you know, and I'm not talking about, some, I'm, you know, I'm, people know the ones I've talked about, the ones that have problems. If I have problems, or what, I come and tell them, but I, I don't have problems.
My mom wants fine, some of them...
Some of them are fine.
Some of them even have to draw the box. I don't have that, I'm, I'm just, I don't cut up, but I can just chew stuff, a whole lot.
You sure do.
Yeah.
I hear you, go name one.
That's right.
But I, if, if, if I go for, for, I will tell them, you know, that's not a problem. But the ones I've been getting complaints, we've been telling these, get this, with one certain individual, numerous times, clean it up, get your renter done better, or, you know, something like that to be done, and it seems like it goes in one ear and out the other most of the time, so...
Would the trailer inspector help any, like, we had one time...
Oh, we've got a inspector, but we only put certain things in, it's when they moved them in, we inspected, they had that hundred pan and the, the roof pan and things like that, once they're put in, then, all things are off, we didn't put anything in, or, and all that, like, it was just, any new trailer, or used trailer that's brought in and set up, and we grandfathered... And we grandfathered everybody else in, so we don't have a, you know, we can't go out there and tell them to put underpanded up now, or paint their roof or anything like that, 'cause we didn't put it in orders. We said everybody.
I want my places to look good out there. I want my places to look good.
But, uh, that's our problem, we didn't go back and say, well, if you've been here ten years, we're gonna make you paint your roof or make it look good, and we didn't put that in, or we just put it for the new ones, so we don't have no law. Or orders to enforce what they got now, or what they had before, the orders, that's what I'm trying to say, so. But it, it's, some of them, some places look pretty bad.
Right. I agree with that, they'll not let them up sugar cane, but where you go.
Can we get a letter to those owners?
We, we already said better to one owner with the problem we had on Route Seven, and that problem proved up to. I haven't tried it with anybody else yet.
Did you, if you see that, or the city council.
The main thing is, anytime you see a thing you don't think's right, call city hall and tell us, and we'll write it down, we'll look at it, you know, and I'll see if it's, we can do something better or not, that's the thing, that's what, that's what you should be doing. Even anybody that's, that lives in the city, if you got a problem, call city hall, we'll write it down, and we check on it, you know. Any kind of complaint you got, it's, don't matter, that's what we're here for, you know.
There are a couple someplace, and I'm not sure exactly where they are, and they haven't been inspected, but the sewer just dropped over the creek.
Uh, we've already took, uh, we're already on that, we've took care of that problem, I think. Uh, uh, we found out that was a, the same guy ran it out.
I didn't think they could get Lakers without sewer.
You would not believe how people circumvent the system to get what they want. And they'd rather run sewer in the creek than eat evidently, 'cause that's what they do. And they try to run it on somebody else's sewer, or they try to go into somebody else's grinder pump, or they try to run up somebody else's water, you know, people watering sewer, they, every day. And we get a complaint, I call Sean, they go out, yeah, and it's.
You're thinking that might be a reason a lot of people's in quarter pace for that, what's city water?
That's below where we take it in, you know, Tom, that's below where we take it in.
I have problems with the garbage, and if that, I call all the time, don't I? Diagress you with the garbage, I, I want my garbage to be cared of.
Well, the problem is, that, that's the county, that's not, our city makes them pick it up, the county's supposed to enforce that, I like get that out of my hand, if we have somebody that's gonna pay the garbage bill, the county enforces that, or is supposed to, I think. Okay.
Hey, mayor, I'm making a motion to return.
We got, we got something else.
Well, let's move on, early, during daylight.
The tourism board, I have two ladies, and how they, when I'm saying to you, they're really interested in helping make the city look better. I don't know where to turn to about the tourism board, I don't know who to contact.
Well, the two ladies come to me and talked to me about it, about doing some of the things which we're already gotten, I told them, first thing, do it over the Renaissance, meet, come, meeting, and they made everyone to call Emma. And then if they were interested, uh, one of them's out of the city, but one of them's in the city, if they're interested to be on tourism, they both put their name, put them on tourism, you know.
Well, I talked to Emma about it, and they, they are not sure if they even make, I talked to Pat, and they're, they don't even know the last time they met.
I've been trying, we've, we contacted David, the other members of the board, and that, there wasn't nobody else, but they've got three members that we have appointed, that they can meet anytime they want to, and I told them to meet. Anytime they want to, they've got a form now, three out of five, they can meet anytime they want to, and I hope they do meet, 'cause, well, we do need some help on that, so. You know, I told Pat, I like, have a meeting, I think Trey Lichten and Benita Patrick's their three members we, we, this board's appointed, and that gives us a form, so. To meet, so they can meet. They sure can, and I did tell them ladies, you know, they, they want to do a lot of things, some things they want to do, we've already done, and it don't look like we've done, we have done some of the things, but, yeah. I'm interested to get anybody on them boards and get some stuff started.
You know, the city has, I know, we have a lot of employees, I noticed with their time sheets and stuff, and everybody writes them, why don't you all have, where you scan your cards or a thumbprint or something?
Do you set a clock?
Why don't, I mean, why is it writing and stuff now?
We never got around to doing that, I mean, it's probably, it's gonna cost us money to put it in, and, and do that, so I.
Waterworks used to have a clock too, there's downstairs, where's it at, do they have one now?
They're killing me with the waterworks, come to the meeting, Tommy, you've got more time to want out than you, I can't go to the meeting.
Talking about these, uh. Time clocks, I said, hell, everybody ought to have a time clock.
I took one out of the health. You got a problem, find it, but, um.
I'm not looking for it, I'm just saying it already been known for the public to see, instead of them, uh.
I'll, I'll talk to Pat and see if they can't get a meeting, you said, you know, I'm. In fact, the one, uh. Wes's wife, she, inventory is a thing with, uh, that one, that, uh, paint spill, so she will, you know, she knows what's going on.
A great ideas.
I know, they got a lot of ideas, one of them was putting the pots up, we just got money for it, but. And one of them was the pressure washer city, which we did pressure wash the city last year with, tricked pressure washers, so, it's hard to make all this stuff look good. Even if you clean it once in a while, these old bricks and stuff, so, a lot of people got, got a good idea, they just need to come out and give it to us.
They might be good to help with that, some of that grant money, that pots and stuff.
It is, uh, that grant money also has to have involvement with, uh, four H, uh, extension office, uh, ag department, and. And on the history of classes at school, kind of involve them, and get the planning with it, like looking up the information on the old buildings and the. Ag department doing some of the work with the flowers and stuff, so, okay. But, yeah, but I told, I told them to go see Emma too at the Renaissance, because Pat's always, I think she's the president now, and they could get their ideas on them, and then come to meet or whatever. And a lot of stuff, like the Renaissance, started last, about beautifying the city and stuff, and they kind of got, I don't know, lost money, not done nothing.
I, I've been getting complaints about boxing in the park.
I told, we warned, we warned the kids, that they got one warning, next time we're gonna take them to jail, I appear with, or if they're boxing them.
Who's locking the park?
Uh, Larry opens it up in the morning, and police officers open it, lock it up at night.
Doesn't be closing.
Uh, right now, ten ain't Matthew, or, well, when everybody leaves, now. When everybody's done, we can keep them about.
Police officers locking it in. Are we having anybody patrol, can we get, can we get Larry to help patrol that park?
Larry's staying down there sometimes, I have more complaints on him, I try to make people do things right than I do them doing wrong. You know, and that's kind of a shame, you know, when he's down there doing what we tell him, and keep, trying to keep peace, and you get, it's just, it's, it's, uh. People should be, park, they should be, it, it's a park for everybody, the ki- especially kids, and you get a bunch of just foolishness down there that.
This is what I've noticed, a walk. They are boxing.
We need to call, you got Matthew's number?
Another, another thing, another thing I, another thing I've noticed, they are turning on us a lot. I mean, I'll take video if I need to, but I just wondered if we could get somebody to help patrol that park, when there's multiple people in there. When old people call me, as the city councilman, they say, so we're beating each other's head off, they're shaking people on, I get out and drive, drive over there and say. Whoops, what's going on, they'll say, we're just having a good time, but now, I'm just saying, can we, as a, as a city council, can they, can you box in the park?
Can you sit there and? I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, I tell everybody else, if you see something going on, you pick up the phone, you call nine one one, you call the first state, you call police officer, and they'll be there, if they're not there, then they answer to me.
Well, last time.
And that, that shouldn't be your all's job to go out and tell them not to stop boxing, that should be.
No, I don't, the, the, the last time that happened, I did call Matthew, and he got on it, and he called Josh Peace, and Josh Peace from over there. But I'm just saying, about somebody getting hurt, about something that happened, you know, I mean, if we sat by and just walked by that and ignored that, I don't wanna be liable for somebody's kid to get in trouble over there. You know what I think?
That's why, that's why I was saying, yeah.
We need to build a boxing arena.
And, and could we, could we, let me just, if we could call Pete to wash it.
Yeah, I didn't want to add anything, I've got a complaint on that today, and I'm gonna do it, they need to be washed up as far as, I told the street, we'll kind of clean them out, but evidently they didn't get none.
Cause I had so many bad things like that.
Yeah, I did too, I, I was taking your left, no problem, this time, tomorrow and the next, but we'll have them turn it up for them. We always washed them out for them, but I didn't.
Yeah, I know, I know, we always did, and then.
Back, when that last flood, we went out and tried to sweep them out, some, some extra stuff to keep, sort of, this, this, but anyway. That's like everybody, if you see somebody doing wrong, pick up the phone, call somebody, call nine one one, or call. Call, you need to get a police officer, don't try to do it yourself, 'cause then. And I know when Josh Peace went out, he put them out, he told them next time.
Yeah, he did, he did do it, he did.
And then they went up here on the parkway.
I guess old people, just older people walking just has concern, saying, there're people here watching, and they're beating each other.
Are they using gloves?
No. You would think they'd have to have too many, factually quit. All right, anybody, I'm willing to look for the public, anybody in the, in the, in the office, I think.
Come on, Paul, say something. How's the new far truck, how's the new far truck doing?
Taking right on their new wheels.
How's the new car doing on the new truck? They, they look like they should look good, price wise. They white walk?
Nope.
And here for the discussion, anybody else got anything you wanna, what would, by Cal, you just.
College Heights.
Yes, sir.
Much potter.
Wait until you do, we. Time out, time out, time out, if you got, we've looked at that, it's on our list, when it warms up enough and get the concrete really good and hot, we're gonna put them up there.
Yeah, I talked.
They're about to roll up here in front of Rickard's Bar.
All it needs is grading and a little gravel, I'm not blacktopping, if any blacktop.
I can say that, we just have a bunch of bad. Oh, cold branch. Up here where you drill the steel and that everything, it's all.
We're gonna have to concrete, do some, put that stuff up a different way. It's the water doing that, it's the water doing that, yeah, so we're gonna bring that one. It did rain, yeah, where they just fell in, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna clean that out, and put up some kind of thing in there to coat that, uh, concrete it up, and then put it.
Anything else, Pete?
I've got everyone in my list, they. I usually get a call.
See more fish than food. And if you see more fish than food.
No, I ain't more than them, they like call you, Tommy. Yeah, we got coke back from last year. It, it's doing pretty. They kept it covered up, they told us to keep it covered, park and stuff in there, and it.
That road up there, Rick's needs to be graded, nice and bad potter, but.
Yeah, I told Rick, ain't, I don't think nobody lives on that road. Rick, I think everyone lives on that, Rick's, uh, where else, they keep your stuff over there, so. It is bad, I told, we'd, we'd get up and grade a little bit, we had no, with, no blacks have graded, and it still waters out, I don't know what's bad, where the drainage is up there, it keeps, keeps. And they were blacktopping, so.
I make a motion, we.
Poor boy can, can.
I'll say, can go pay duty for that Cal.
All in favor?
I'll save it for next time.
I might not be here next time.
I'm, I'm making a motion, we told.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.